All right, we need a motion on the floor. We got the minutes from the October 19th meeting, please.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as amended for October 19th, 2020.
The amendment is, yeah, the amendment is just striking, it's not numbered, but James Quirk made a motion to grant a waiver request for section 3.4.5, release of lots for L 59 and 60. Removed was 61, 65, 66, 67, and 68, which was addressed in the next motion to grant the foundation permits.
I thought I really messed up on those.
You did mess up. Just kidding.
That was tough.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
John Vannslos, aye.
Bill Lambrosino, aye.
Okay.
All right, so that puts that to order.
Do you want to do the 81P for Bill Halsey? He's not attending, but I'm not sure if he's going to call in or not.
I think he's here too.
Oh, Bill, I'm sorry.
He's Batman.
Good thing I didn't say anything bad.
Yeah, he's Batman.
I would never do that.
I was going to say, he said Bill Halsey. I'm like, he's sitting right there, geez. What do you got, Bill?
This is the Form A.
Hey, just throw them under Jimmy. He's going to sign them all anyway.
For someone who has awarded them.
And so, you're looking for 81P on lot 6A, right?
Yeah, well, both of them.
The 10 acres?
Both of them.
Yeah, we're drawing the line between 6 and 10.
There's one lot, make a two.
Yeah. Now, this is an existing lot, though, right?
Yeah.
It's been downsized by the ZBA.
Yes.
I don't think we need to address that in the 81P, though.
Yeah, the only thing we're addressing is the frontage. The existing house lot meets everybody, but they have a variance frontage for the big piece in the back.
Yep. My question is, did it make this nonconform?
No.
Okay. Yeah, so then you're fine. Yeah, okay. And you've got plenty of upland?
Ponds.
Yep. An issue? All right, then. If I could have a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion for the 81P for lot 6A.
Lot 6A.
Lot 6A.
James Quirk, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that takes care of that. That's got to be a record. Holy cow. In five minutes, we got through minutes and 81P.
Let me give you a copy of that extension.
All right.
Over that, though?
Yeah. So you're just looking to extend this to the next meeting on November 23rd?
No, this is a request for the subdivision approval extension.
Yeah. Did you write that? Have you completed that with Jeff?
I'm sorry, what?
The changes with Jeff.
I'm sorry?
Changing what?
Yep, they're all there.
Did you complete going over the changes with Jeff?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, for that slope, this is.
So you're just going to, you're just writing up the?
Well, I already did that. That was quite a while ago, but that was right after the last meeting. But this is a request, the subdivision approval expires on the 23rd of November. So this is, we're asking for a five-year extension of that approval.
Geez, actually, someone actually comes in. Fred, I got to say, you're good. Okay, so does everybody understand what they? Well, I'll wait for the rest of the board.
You have the pen, you have the sign.
Three sheets. The approval sheet to sign, Gil. Three sheets.
There should be right there.
Dan, while they're doing that, is Ian coming, or for the zoning board changes? Are you handling that?
I can't, I don't know. Somebody might be calling in.
All right, it's 7:15, so.
I mean, I squeeze it out, but.
Oh, okay.
Do you have a copy of the zoning changes?
Are you all set now with everything?
I can print some over if you want.
Yeah, you can just print a few more, just so the guys.
All right, Gary, take your trees down now.
All right. One step at a time, Sean.
Did you sign on with these?
I see.
Tell that.
It's okay.
Show Bill up.
No, Bill, yeah, hold on. Mr. Barla, please.
Bye, guys.
This one has no price. Yes, he does. I went to the van, I think they're not. This one has no price. Wait a minute.
Okay, first, yes.
Yes.
They're already, they're already going to tell.
I'll call them tomorrow. Just wait till the Form As, too.
Yeah, I got something.
He's got to sign that one, the my lot first.
Yes, I know.
I don't know if he either.
Someone let me check. Must be Phil. I know. I'd like to pick this in here from the ZBA. Do you see Joe Erickson during the day?
Uh, yeah, he'll be in, he'll monitor.
Did you ever call me on 635? What is it, 635?
I'm ready to sign.
All right, so, back to this. Let me just explain, what are these?
Sign those.
What are these for? Oh, Bill's?
Yeah.
I feel like a pro-clinger just throwing papers up, put your name on here.
You've got to be careful. You never know what you're signing.
Yeah, really, right? I'm joining the military, oh, boy.
All right, I'll date student.
All right.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dan, by the way. All right, back to shade engineering. Basically, he's looking at extension of time on the subdivision. Apparently, the time has expired on the current construction period, so we just have to expend it. He's looking for another five-year extension.
You're wrong with that, really?
No, I don't. I know what I mean. Where are we going to get that thing finally fixed?
Well, we're going to, we are at the halfway point with the next bond. I calculated the road length. That is the halfway point of the road system. So, and that's with the Great Recession and a pandemic.
Yeah, the second half should go, the second half should go a heck of a lot better.
That's going to tie into the other piece around the backside?
Yeah, it'll, it'll come right around, and that's probably after this phase, they'll open it up, they'll open that full loop up.
All that frame's left. All right, I just need a motion on table to approve the, the extension of the construction period for five years would bring us to November 23rd of 2025.
Make a motion to approve them. We call them Misco Spring now? Misco Spring for five more years.
Misco Springs, yeah, okay.
James Quirk, second.
All those in favor?
John Vannslos, in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
Bill Lambrosino, aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Didn't give me any place to sign on here.
Well, 7:15 is the.
All right. So that makes the minutes, that approval, because he doesn't have a signature pit line on there.
Yes, definitely.
This is on the.
Zoning bylaws.
Zoning bylaw changes, all right. Oh, look at that, 7:15. Man, are we moving along tonight. All right, I'm going to read the legal notice into the record. According to Master of Law, Chapter 48, Section 5 of Public Camera will be held on Monday, November 9th at 7:15 to see if the town will amend the zoning bylaws. The town will amend the zoning bylaw 1.02 definitions, Section 4.04, site plan review to correct typos and incorporate recommended stormwater management practices. Public Camera will be held at 20 Main Street in this selectmen boardroom by the amended planning board. It was advertised in the Milford Daily News on 10:23 and 10:30. Back to, all right, and we'll start with proposed amendment for Article 7. I'm amending, because it's got the Article 7 on the top, you've already put in the warrant?
Yeah, so this is on the warrant, and.
Okay.
The hearing.
Yep. Amend, says amend in Section 1.02, we're removing rerating, rearranging items J and K to put them in alphabetical order, which, as you can see, is outlined by, in red, removed Lot A and low-impact development. So it's just more of a alphabetical order situation. It looks to me that the wording is pretty much the same.
It's identical. It's just a housekeeping.
Okay, all right. Move on to.
You don't need a motion for any of this, right, Bill?
We will, we will at the end.
Yeah.
We'll amend Section 4.04, Site Plan Review, section, subsection each. Information on location, size, and capacity of existing and proposed utility systems, including sewage or septic system, water supply system, telephone, cable, electrical systems, and storm drainage system, including existing and proposed drain lines, culverts, catch basins, headwalls, end walls, hydrants, manholes, BMPs, and drainage swales. It appears the BMPs is what's being added here. And it just states that the planning board may also request soil logs, percolation tests, or more runoff calculations, which is pretty standard practice. So the rest of that section remains the same, they're just adding the BMPs to the.
Yep, so this is just, it's, I believe it's best management practices, and I think it's the last change.
Yep. All right, and then we'll move on to.
I'll be glad to know what that BMP stands for.
Yeah, you, you might want to do that, so that just puts a legend at the bottom. Or, well, did you change definitions, or?
You know, I bet, we should check, so either we should add it to the definitions, or we should.
I would add it to the.
Somebody's going to ask that.
Yeah, better just write it out.
Yeah, just write it out, we'll ask it from the bottom.
Yeah, just that, and the parentheses.
Yeah, because if you, if you change the definitions, we're going to need another amendment.
I just add it to the bottom.
You know, anyone who's dealing with that normally will know what it is, but for the, just put an asterisk at the bottom, and just so it identifies it to the town when it's on the floor. Because if not, someone will ask a question. All right, insert new subsection M. All right, so we're inserting this entire new section as regarding inspection. It says the planning board is authorized to conduct inspections and enforce preconstruction erosion control measures, as well as conduct inspection of BMPs at the following stages. One, initial site inspection prior to approval of any permit. Erosion control inspection prior to earth disturbing activities, but after installation of all approved erosion sediment controls. Stormwater management system inspection prior to backfilling of any portion of a stormwater management system, including underground drainage or stormwater conveyance structures. Periodic inspections throughout land disturbance activities, as well as, until as builds are received. Final inspection to confirm effectiveness in an actual stormwater event that creates runoff if the inspector finds a system is not functioning properly. The applicant shall repair or modify the system to be in conformance with these bylaws.
On this one, this whole section is being added, correct?
Oh, so this is already in. We're just renaming it from subsection M to subsection N, is that correct?
No, this, this whole section M is new, and then there's a, there's an existing section N that'll become section N, that's the existing enforcement powers.
Okay, so the existing subsection M enforcement is moving to N enforcement.
That's the.
And this will be the M, okay? All right.
A little confusing.
I would try and explain that a little bit better before you get to town floor.
Yeah, a little confusing.
Well, I'm just wondering how you could reword that.
We can put the whole site plan review section.
Yeah, why don't you just do that, because we got a few different changes? Yes?
Just a question, is this for just site plans, the stormwater management?
Yeah, it doesn't seem to, it doesn't seem to appear to, because you guys are the guidance on stormwater management, best practices for subdivisions anyways. I mean, that's, that's in the bylaw today, so.
I just wonder, why is the additional letter of regulation added to the zoning bylaw? It's in your subdivision regs, right?
Yeah, this is more for site plans, for like, you know, the buildings on 16 and stuff, I think, has been runoff that has, at times, hasn't appeared to, to make it to, you know, to the culvert. So I think this is a practice to make sure that's going to happen, and then to make sure they don't get clogged in the future.
So this is just site plan review, those site plans.
Yes.
If I understand this correctly, tie and bond is part of this whole stormwater project, went through our bylaws, and these are their recommendations, and just like minor things to bring us into complete compliance with whatever the state things are. So I think this is probably stuff that's already been doing, it's just more of making sure we've got it all covered in the, in the bylaws.
Well, except that they are subdivision regulations.
Yeah. Yeah, my, my, my question, I would assume, because we're referencing it in, within the zoning bylaw, would have to, the only thing we have in zoning bylaw is the, the site plan review. Subdivision rules and regulations control the subdivision, so it's got to be site plan review.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's planning document. Actually, the zoning documents are our documents, too. Yeah, I know they had tie and bond go through it, and I'm glad to see, we must be doing a heck of a job if this is all they come up with.
She pretty consistently says that Allen is very in top of all the stuff.
Yeah, I mean, as far as stormwater management, Shirley and I wrote those regulations years ago, and incorporated, and Jeff Walsh was big in having us tie together with the state's stormwater management, in referencing that instead of, you know, referencing our own. So it's, it's much cleaner than it needed to be.
Why don't we put it in a whole new section? Why don't we just add on to section M?
What do you mean?
Is this a?
No, they're taking N enforcement, moving it down. Right now, M is enforcement.
Yeah.
This is enforcement, this is control.
Action and enforcement.
Yeah, one's inspection, one's enforcement.
No, it says right here. Name was authorized to conduct inspection and enforcement, preconstruction erosion.
You're under what?
Aye, the first paragraph, right here. Action and enforcement. I got enforcement.
No, that just references that the board is authorized to conduct inspection and enforcement. I mean, I don't care whether you title it a one, or, or we break it up into two, I mean, this, I think it should say M is inspection and N is enforcement, because everything in M is inspection, and then enforcement's a whole other matter. Do you have a copy of that, that section, the stormwater?
Oh, that's your site plan review on the screen, and I didn't see.
I couldn't read that.
That's the enforcement.
Yeah, see, the duty, it's, enforcement is a duty of zoning. There really is a.
Bill, I have the copy of the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
The updated one.
I'm just wondering a cleaner way of doing it without creating a whole lot of, a whole lot of stuff. Page is that, 44? Yeah, you know what, because this is an inspection, and this is kind of enforcement after the fact, so they really should be separate, I think. I would just leave it, I would just leave it separate. I think you dirty it up a little bit, but as far as, it's more just a case of making sure people are, as they're moving along through the site project, that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing.
I know you've pretty, got it pretty well covered under the subdivision regs.
Yeah, well.
You have to file them both.
Right.
You're filing with constipation, division, planning board, DEP already. You have regular inspections up there.
No, I don't anticipate changing the subdivision rules and regulations. I mean, I think we have that pretty good, outlined pretty well in there. So I, I'm not anticipating we'd be changing those. So I say we make a motion to amend Section 1.02, Section 4.04, and change. Change, let's see, what is site plan review? Hold on.
What type of question?
Okay, really put, should have put those two together, but we can reference 4.04, site plan review, section M and N is outlined. Why don't, I could have a motion on the floor?
Can make a motion to amend Article 7, amend Section 1.02 definitions.
You can do it separately?
Article 7 is a warrant.
Yeah, the Article 7 is a warrant, it's Section 1.02 definitions.
So it's 102 and, okay. I could do a separate for 4.04?
Yeah, yeah.
All going to be in the same motion?
No, you can do them separately. All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
John Vannslos, aye.
Bill Lambrosino, aye.
Motion to amend Section 4.04, Site Plan Review, subtitle, Section H, BMPs and definitions.
And insert the new subsection M.
And also insert new subsection M.
Inspection.
Inspections.
And reletter enforcement.
And reletter enforcement to N enforcement.
Second.
Those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
John Vannslos, aye.
Bill Lambrosino, aye. So I put that matter to rest. Are you going to prepare the document for the floor, or do you want me to do it?
I can do that, I'll be at the meeting, I don't know if.
I probably, I, when is the meeting? I won't be there. I have medical procedure going on, so I can.
All right, I can have a motion.
Yeah, good.
I'll just do that one definition.
Yeah, I'm sure you won't have any issues.
It's a continuation of the public hearing, so you don't have to read anything, 63 Providence. And this is the letter of.
All right, well, I'm going to read it into the record. All right. Over to continuing the public hearing for site plan special permit for 63 Providence Street. We received a letter from the engineer. It says, Dear Board Members, on behalf of the applicant Scotland Zeta, DA Baker Realty LLC, we request a continuation of the public hearing for the special permit site plan review for 63 Providence. This is so the applicant's engineer can have time to respond to peer review comments that have not been issued, we request to be continued to the next meeting. And what would that meeting date be?
The 23rd, but remember, the select board is using this room until 7:00.
So.
So, do you want to put it, start the meeting at 7:30 and?
What board uses it?
7:15, I mean, I'm sorry.
What board uses it?
The select board.
The select board.
I thought you said zoning board was the same.
No, select board.
Why don't you do, why don't we start the meeting at 7:15?
Okay, so you want to put that then at 7:30?
Yep.
Okay.
And please advise, advise the engineer and the applicant, please.
Make a motion to move the application for 63 Providence Road to November 23 at 7:30.
Second.
All those in favor?
James Quark, aye.
John Vassilis, aye.
Phil Ambrosino, aye. Okay. So that takes care of that.
Okay.
And at 7:45, we have the.
103 Exford Road.
103 Exford Road. Have you heard back from the applicant on that?
Nope.
Okay. Just so you guys are aware, the town consultant was not able to finish the peer review. So at any case, it'll be continued to the next meeting. Until we receive Jeff's peer review.
Jeff said he would be able to get both of them sometime next week.
Okay. Could we make sure that the applicant's engineer receives that peer review? So they can answer any questions before the meeting?
Right, Jeff always sends them.
Okay, just.
So they can.
Yeah, just make sure he sends it to them. See if they, upon receiving your email, if they show up tonight. If not, we'll continue it to.
Well, I sent an email to Amanda, the one in Franklin.
Yeah, she never responded?
Yeah, that Jeff couldn't. And Bob Parkinson sent a copy to you and to myself that he had just heard at 2:30 that
Yeah.
Jeff wasn't able to complete the review.
Yeah, maybe Jeff, maybe Jeff had responded to them, so if that being the case, we can continue it to the next meeting.
Do you want to wait to make the motion to continue it?
Yeah, I have to wait 7:45. They still may arrive. I just heard the door open. Could be them. Like that.
Oh, okay.
We'll allow them to do their to show the community the project. They'll wait till the next meeting for the peer review.
That letter back.
Give these back to, yeah, I know what I'm doing.
Do you want that?
An updated.
Yeah, all right, I keep any of them. Oh, I can keep that one?
Yeah, you can keep that.
Okay. You forgot to take this.
We want to discuss about the road acceptance. Hi.
Um, yeah, we might as well.
Did you ladies sign in?
Yes, we did.
Okay, thank you.
We.
On Meadow?
Yeah, why don't we talk about what's going on there?
Well, I guess Bob Parkinson's not here to answer the question of if they went for a certificate of compliance through conservation.
Damon's not here either. All right, just table that to the next meeting. Please, put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay. So it won't be able to, it'll have to be passed over at the town meeting.
Yes, Jimmy, you can, you can reach out to Damon and get us an answer.
But there's still some things that he hasn't completed. Alfonso doesn't want to clean the basins unless the road's going to be approved. Because he doesn't want to do it twice.
Oh, we're not, we're not going to, I mean, not going to approve.
Okay, so that's, all right, so we'll put it on.
And if this, if he hasn't missed compliance with.
Okay, so I'll put it on for.
Conservation is a moot point anyways.
So I'll put it on for 7:15?
Yeah.
For Pond Meadow, I mean, discussion.
If he wants to wait, if he waits till the spring for acceptance, I mean.
I don't know, that's what I was just discussing with Jeff.
We don't need to take a vote on that.
No.
Road acceptance.
Okay.
We need, that he needs to finish those basins, and we need the certificate of compliance from.
And it has to be recorded before you can approve the.
Right.
The road being accepted.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, if she had it, why didn't she provide it to us?
Okay, so I'll put that on for 7:15.
Yeah, note the minutes that, you know, the question was asked why it wasn't provided by the applicant. The applicant's responsible to provide. It's not, it's not up to the planning board to chase down a certificate of compliance from conservation.
Okay. I don't know, did you guys get a copy of the, that Fred asked for a construction cost estimate? Do you have to do anything on this?
No, he needed to get that done with Jeff.
So that's all, he just, yeah, Jeff did it.
Jeff did it, yeah, because he has to provide bond for it.
Okay.
That's on Misco.
Correct.
Yeah.
On Locust Hill.
Yeah.
Okay, so you don't have to do anything with this.
I'd like to see the bond estimate. And then, then we have to have a copy of it before you, a copy of the bond before you release any lots down there.
Okay.
And you want to tell Fred that. Or you release building permits, I should say. We already released a lot, but he's got to get the cert done.
Okay. Well, that's right, because that was in.
Yeah, that's one of the conditions.
Conditions, yes, okay.
I'm sure he's getting it together, but we need a copy.
Okay.
So Jeff's has a rounded figure of 828,000 for that section of roadway.
827.
Yeah, he rounds up to 828. I'll make sure you put in your, on your to-do list, ask Mr. Erickson to call me tomorrow. I just, I have a question for him regarding 63 Providence.
Yep.
I'd like the input of zoning before we go to public hearing. I need the same form. Just to explain the fact, as soon as I get in the meeting, I'll explain as to what transpired, but in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, notice hereby given that a public hearing for a site plan review special permit will be held on Monday, November 9, 2020, at 7:45 in the Select Board Meeting Room at 20 Main Street to consider a special permit pursuant to section 2.0 of the amended zoning bylaws to raise existing structure constructing operator 3,200 square foot marijuana dispensary located at 103 Exford Road. Mendon, Mass, assesses map 10-236103. Property is owned by DJM Investment, 220 Pulaski Boulevard, Bellingham. I was advertised in the. Just for the community, we have a peer review engineer that does work for the town amendment. He represents the planning board. And when the engineer submits his, his plan to the planning board, that plan goes off to our engineer to see if it meets all the guidelines, you know, structurally, site work, and whether it meets our zoning bylaws. Our engineer was not. We are going to continue this public hearing to the next meeting, which will be.
23rd.
November 23rd.
November 23rd. So we'll continue this public hearing until November 23?
7:45.
At 7:45.
Once you make a motion.
Yes, we do.
I need a motion on the floor, please.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for 103 Exford Road to November 23 at 7:45.
Second.
All those in favor?
James Quark, aye.
John Vassilis, aye.
Phil Ambrosino, aye. Gail, if I could reference the fact, you need to get an answer tomorrow as to whether that is acceptable to the applicant. The fact that they didn't appear tonight would suggest to me that they are acceptable to us continuing the hearing. But just make sure that the November 23
Okay.
date is, is good for them. If not, we'll continue at that meeting. Yeah, he didn't have an opportunity. We've got a lot of projects going on, and he was kind of backed up. And he wasn't able to complete the peer review, so.
But that date's not acceptable to them. Did we get a written notice about it?
I would look on the town site and just watch the agendas. If you put a, if you go on the town site and you register, you can put a check mark on the planning board. You'll get any updates on anything that's going on on the.
Oh, really? Oh, okay.
Yes, Dan. And that way, anytime there's a planning board issue or anything, it'll send you the agenda. And you can look and see if there's something on there that. Yeah. We're all about people coming. We like people coming to our meetings, because most people don't come to our meetings.
Want to be here.
We're glad to have you.
Especially going to my backyard.
Yeah, I hear you. I don't live far from there either, and, you know, unfortunately, but.
Yeah, it's right in my backyard, so. Okay. Not too happy about it, but. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Are you, are you Comforty?
I am.
I'm Ambrosino from Mari Street. I used to work on Roger's farm. I used to see you guys like every day, driving the truck by.
Your brother used to always work at the White House.
Yes, Kyle, yeah.
Yes.
He just retired from the Upton Police Department.
I wish him well on that.
Yeah. Your husband still walks, like, all over the place?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, like.
He's still working, so when he, on his days off that he's not working, he walks.
I see, I see him all over town, it's like.
Well, no, he only walks, he usually walks either Park Street or he walks.
That's where I see him most of the time.
Up around, you know, the Route 16 to Millville and Tappan. He usually gets in about four miles when he does his walk or whatever.
He looks in great shape. Tell him I said hi. I remember I used to stop and talk to him occasionally back in the day, but time goes by.
It does, it does. He's still working. He's working now for the Registry of Motor Vehicles in Milford.
Oh.
He does the security there, so he works four days.
Are they open now? Are they back open again? Oh, don't worry, the governor will shut it down again anyway.
They'll be open, because people get a. No, they'll be open because people are going to register their vehicles.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, it's still open.
Some states, you gotta, like Connecticut, you had to go to Dropbox, drop your registration in, and then they mail it back to you in about two months.
Right, right. Yeah, no, they're still open.
Oh, that's good. I'm glad.
Keep them out of trouble.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, guys.
Good night.
Thank you.
Uh, we got something... Yeah, we got Ann coming in for Applewood. What's up, Ann? How we doing?
I'm good. Oh, no.
Hey, you don't have your mask on.
So, what I was, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. So, I'm coming in about the Applewood subdivision, which is an open space subdivision. And it had a, they set aside open space, but the access to the open space, I don't know if you remember, but it goes through one of the lots and it's going to be an easement. Do you remember that?
Yeah.
Did you ever get that memorandum completed, Ann, or...
No, and we've been working on it literally for over a year. And we have conceded, you know, many things, but the one thing that is a sticking point is that the easement to the open space, it has to be public access, that's what the bylaw says.
Right, correct.
But they, the lawyer for the Applewood was saying that they wanted to have it only for the people in this cul-de-sac. And my concern is, and they haven't signed the MOU. And my concern is, is that they're going to sell the lot by before we submit an easement, not have it be public access, have it be for the subdivision.
Yeah, that's, that's...
And the town will have to have big arguments with a landowner.
Yeah, that's, that's not going to work for the community and I think, I think, you know, relief was provided to the applicant based for the entire community, not just the people that live within the subdivision. So I think public access has to be regarded for the entire community. The zoning bylaws refer to the entire community, so I think it would be difficult to allow access to that property just for the subdivision. And, you know, he's going to have to provide proof before we release a road.
So my concern is, they've started building houses and they build them on Lot 1 and Lot 2, and they're very nice. The houses are very attractive.
Yeah.
But he skipped over 3 and 4 and has jumped to 5. And so my concern is, is that they're going to try to sell 5 with the easement, and so it's out of their hair and then the town will have to deal with the private residential. So what I would like to see happen, and we're having our town council and their lawyer work together. We've been working literally for... I have the document, they've agreed on everything. The only thing we've added is to say it's a public easement and they haven't signed. So, first of all, if the planning board could get them to sign it, I can give you a copy of it, that would be helpful. And tell them that if they don't have it be a public easement signed in Lot 2, that they have the bond, the road bond money.
It, it, I think, regulation wise, I don't think the, and I have to talk to Cindy, but I don't think the planning board has the key. I think we have to go to zoning enforcement and he did, they'd have to go down and put a cease and desist on the property until it's resolved. If he doesn't intend to follow the regulations, the regulations clear this as public access. Doesn't say people on that street. So, the zoning enforcement, I just don't want to step out of bounds. We can talk, we can have a three-way with Cindy if you want.
So, who is the enforcement officer? Is it...
I think, I think you'd have to start at John Erickson first. But Laura Brodeur, I think, is probably is going to end up dealing with it. But John is, John's the guy who would make the ruling.
So should I contact him or would you contact him?
Um, you know more about this than I do. You know, I don't want to have to be a jump between, between the two of yous. If he needs me at all, he certainly, you know, just tell him to give me a call. But, I mean, I think the zoning bylaw is clear.
Okay.
So, I mean, if they want to challenge the bylaw, they're certainly capable of doing that. So we don't want to see that happen. But that's, that's why we have town council. I mean, Cindy's got to tell us whether we're overstepping our bounds. I don't believe we are.
No, you're not, Cindy.
Yeah.
I'm going to call her tomorrow also to have her talk to their lawyer and get them to sign it. But the good news is the zoning bylaw changes that we made at the, I think it was the annual town meeting, won't allow this situation, so, you know, won't have to deal with this yet.
You know, this was our second one and, you know, we thought we had everything covered, but, you know...
Yeah, if they sell the house, they have to, they have to disclose the easement when they sell that.
Yeah, but they, they're going to try and disclose the easement just to people who live on the street, not total public access, which they're getting relief from the community, not just from the people on the street. They've got to allow access from everybody from the community, so...
And it's in the bylaws. It's, that is clearly written in the bylaws. And, you know, we've kept, we've added in there, you know, before that the town has to approve the language of the easement just so that we can make sure that it says public and they will not sign that.
Well, see what zoning wants to do. I mean, we certainly, and we don't have to accept the road in the end without, you know, total compliance, so...
I don't want it to get to...
No, I get you. I understand. If they sell the house, it pits us against the homeowner and the, in the community. But that's why I get zoning involved right now.
Okay.
All right? And if Cindy and you want to have a conversation, just give me a call. We can work that out.
All right, thank you.
All right, have a good night.
Bye-bye.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 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 aye.
Aye, aye.
I'll tell you.